Jesse Wallace. I'm going to put you on speaker. Thirty seconds, we start the board meeting and we'll go through to the announcements. I'll take the phone over there for that too, okay? Okay, I'm gonna put you on speaker now. Can you hear me? Okay, great.
Hey, reverse this one, Ed. You're on the phone.
It's time to go.
Okay, alright. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Laurin School Board, and I'd like to have a silent meditation followed by the salute to the flag. Apology allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, veritable, just as for all. Roll call, Kim.
Mrs. Beal, President. Mrs. Conway.
Here.
Mr. DeAndrea.
Here.
Mr. Dinana.
Here.
Mr. Elise.
Here.
Mr. Kalasek. Mr. Lammon.
Here.
Mr. Meadows.
Here.
Mr. Raymond.
Good evening.
Nine Presidents.
Thank you. I'd like to have a motion for the adoption of the agenda with an executive session for contractual personnel matters after the superintendent's report and revised Exhibit K and the addendum.
Motion.
Second. Our promotion's been made in second. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Recognition of Laurin's stakeholders. Is anybody that wish would like to speak at this time? Would you like to speak, Ira?
Yeah, I'd like to talk about the, uh, twenty eight, and then, uh, I've got the podium please. The podium please.
Go over here, it's over here. Yes.
Extension of superintendent contract as of discussed. And, uh, just would like to know what was the reasoning?
It's been, I know it's been common practice in the past that, uh, I know Dr. Wallace had an extension, I know Dr. Shiva had an extension about the same period. And I don't, I can't go back much further than that, but, um...
How much time is left?
He's got two years left.
So what's...
Two years.
Okay, so what is, what is the reasoning for addressing it now? That, that's, that's my question.
Oh, I know it's been done in the past that way. That's the only reason.
Well, I mean, like, it's not like NFL, it's not like a free agent or something like that. I mean, it's not like you're gonna be in demand or something like that. So why not wait the two years out?
Well, you can't wait the two years out.
Why?
Mr. Feighauser.
Well, you can wait till the last year of the contract and that, at that point, there requires a, uh, a notice in the last five months of the contract, to allow the superintendent then to, um, know the status of the board at that time. And then, if there's no action within the last ninety days of the superintendent's contract, it extends automatically for one year. But a superintendent's contract can be amended during the term of the agreement, so, but it cannot extend for more than a total of five years. So any extension or amendment to this contract would have to be limited to three years, so as to not go past that total of five.
Okay, can we just...
And then the, uh, the board's discretion with regard to the employment is up to their decision process as far as who they feel would be best service superintendent for the next five years.
Okay, so why, why couldn't we just, like, put it on hold, you know?
They could, I mean, it's...
Because the thing of it is, you know, I mean, you're talking about, I mean, I know this is a money situation. Okay? You know, I've been through this, people that don't know me here, my name is Ira Crutchmore. My wife taught for twenty-five years with the school district, okay? Now, she asked for, on the contract, for a good faith agreement, all she wanted was her benefits extended for one year. That's all she wanted, because she suffered a ruptured brain aneurysm while she was teaching class at Gifted Program. And I got denied, okay? And somebody else got approved, which Amy Tungate, which, God rest her soul, I loved her. She was my daughter's basketball coach. I loved her. She got approved. She taught for seven years. Eileen got denied. So you, you, you tell me how that's right. So I had a million dollars worth of bills looking at me and I gotta, I gotta, I gotta, I gotta str- uh, shuffle this all around. I gotta, I gotta work this all out. Now, you're gonna tell me that we're worried about extending the contract for somebody for the money and we don't, we don't have the money to send, extend somebody else's contract out just for the medical benefits, but we're worried about extending the superintendent out? And at the time, Eileen had a hundred and forty-four days accumulated. And it was brought to me from the, uh, Greg Hench, brought to my attention. She, she has a hundred and forty-something days. She can get a hundred dollars a day. Fourteen thousand dollars. And, you know, Jesse, what do you get if you cash your days at the end of your contract? What do you get?
I get whatever the going rate is.
It's not a hundred dollars a day.
Yeah. If that's what the going rate is.
It's, it's asked being your contract.
It's not, no. It's the same thing as a teacher's.
The same thing?
Yeah.
Okay. But... They're gonna, they're gonna tell me, he told me, why don't you cash the days? So Eileen's gonna get fourteen thousand dollars worth of, uh, money when she could take a whole year off. She took a whole year off, which she got her salary. But anyways, I'm just saying that if we're worried about the money situation, why are we worried about extending a contract out when you couldn't supply my wife with the amount of benefits? And I, and I know...
I didn't deny it.
Yeah, she got denied. You can ask, you can ask Mr. Lammon right here.
That's what she did.
She got denied. And where Eileen got denied?
That, that, that wasn't anything I had to do with it.
I, I vaguely remember some of it, I don't remember all of it, but a lot of the board members were here then, weren't there now, and I...
But maybe it's, it's here and you're there. She got denied. Okay, some of you board members aren't gonna be here when, in the next two years, when Jesse, when his contract's up. You're not gonna be here then. So why should we decide that now?
I would, no one feels worse than what happens to your wife than I. I, I thought...
Oh, I know that, I know that.
I loved your wife.
And that's...
I've been here for years. I know that that's neither here nor there, but I was telling you on that. And I feel bad that she was denied on that. I, I can't go back and do one thing about that right now.
Oh, I know you can. And, but the thing of it is, why are we worried about this? When we, we, we didn't have the money to do that. We're, we're broke. We're, we're freaking broke. We don't have any money. That's what I was told. We're broke, we don't have any money. Okay? So are, are we, we're doing that, we're... Okay, where's our rankings at? Where, where are our rankings at compared to Uniontown, Albert Goughton? Where's our rankings at, Dr. Wallace?
I'd say we're right there above them in some categories, maybe even with them in others.
But I mean...
I don't have my data right here in front of me. Um, if you let me know you were coming and wanna ask that, I'm gonna be fine.
No, I mean, are you justified to ask for an extension?
Um, my contract, you ask why we're doing this, it's customary. Actually, in two months, I'll, I'll be in the last, I'll be in the second year of a three-year. So actually, you know, depending on how you look at it, I only have one year left, which is customary right now, how we're operating.
But I mean, I got three, I got three grandchildren. They're gonna be going to school at Laurin.
I know that, Marcus. I know that. But I'm talking to him. If, let me know, uh...
Well, after, after July, he'll be in his second year of this three-year extension, and he'll have one more after that, is what he meant, I believe.
That's exactly what I mean.
That's the black phone.
But the, the thing of it is, Gary, what I'm saying...
I'm not, I'm not advocating one way or another. I'm just telling you what is permissive.
Okay. But the thing of it is, throw the, you, you justify to me how you deserve an extension, and I'm all for it. I'm all for it.
I mean, what type of examples do you want?
I just want the numbers. Where are you, where are you serving at compared to... I know what the other school districts are doing compared to ours. Our, I know that ours right now is a crap show. Really, I do. And I know our numbers do not meet up with the other school districts. I know that.
Well, I, I disagree. I think in some respects, they do.
Show me the numbers.
I don't have them here with me. I, I don't know what to change.
Okay, well, you, you, you tell me, you justify, okay, you don't have the numbers. How do you justify with two-year extension or three-year extension?
Because we have made improvement. We've made improvement every year. I'll stand on what I say all the time. Also, keep in mind, um, we had at least eight years where there was a board member who adamantly, on every outlet that there is, made multiple types of accusations that that person wasn't for test scores. That person also invited numerous parents to withdraw from testing, which we do. You look at what other, I could tell you those numbers. I can tell you that other school districts in our county may have four or five students that were opting out of testing, where we were having somewhere in the neighborhood of a hundred, a hundred and ten, because we had a consensus that testing didn't make that big of a difference in where a student goes to school and what they do. And that was put out there to the public, and the public followed suit. And when you take those hundred students out of our population, those students aren't the worst test takers. Those are probably the best test takers. You take that fraction out of our test scores, and you're gonna see a noticeable difference. So yeah, I say that we probably did take a... Once we came through that, now our test scores are rising.
Well, I just...
So now are you for me?
No, I just do not think that at this time, I, I don't think this is appropriate at this time.
Well, I, I can acknowledge what you think, but I think different.
Well, I mean, at this time, I think, I think we need to...
And does the job every day.
I mean, we think, I think we need to wait.
Okay, well, I acknowledge that, that's what you think. I think we don't.
That's, that's what I think. I just wanted to bring it to the board to tell you. I think we need to wait and just, just chill out a little bit and just see how things go.
And, uh, to another point, you know, before, I gave you one example, I'll give you my second example. If you look at all of our high school graduates, I'll tell you that probably ninety-five percent or better are going to their first or second choice of college, if they choose a good college. If they're going into the military, they're doing well in the military. We're even going to, um, the academies. And I can tell you that the ones that are choosing to go to work are probably take, and our CTI students are finding very profitable, gainful employment.
Listen, Jesse, my two kids...
And I look at the, the end product, not what the test scores is.
My two kids graduated from Laurin. You know both of them, Brandon and Olivia. You know both of them. Okay? Brandon went to WVU University. He went to Penn State Fayette Campus for two years, got a three-point-nine grade average. Transferred to WVU because he went into mining engineering, okay? Went to WVU, he went into class, he was lost. He was so lost, it was unreal. And you could talk to my daughter Olivia, she's an accountant right now. She'll tell you the same thing. She was lost. The math program and that part of it, and, and, and I'm not single, but the math program is terrible. It is absolutely atrocious. And both of my kids will tell you that. My son is thirty-seven, my daughter's twenty-nine, and they'll both tell you that.
Well, I got a son that's thirty-five, just below, uh, your son. And my son got a math degree in college and the math was very applicable here. I mean, not a, not a teaching math, not a teaching. I'm talking about a math degree and co- and very complicated mathematical computations.
Your son was smarter than my son.
If you wanna give me your example, I'll give you mine.
But I'm just saying, I just think, you know, I just won't leave it. I just wanna leave it at that.
I just wanted to say one thing, I just, I never voted against your wife on anything. In fact, I advocated for her. In fact, I had her in school, I told you before.
I know, Tom, and I appreciate that. And let me tell you what, that was so unfair, what was done to her. That was so unfair. There's the poor girl sitting at home right now in a wheelchair. She cannot get up. She got tube feedies three times a day. And I have to give it to her three times a day, and God bless, I mean, Kim knows. The people, I don't see not one, not, none of you people have ever, ever reached out to my wife since she's been gone, since March first of two thousand eighteen. Nobody has reached out to her and seen if she needed a hand. Only people reached out to her, which I'm not gonna mention no names, they know who they are. And those people have said...
I'm gonna stop you right there. I've called you multiple times myself.
You called me twice, twice.
I think it was more than twice.
Twice. And the only time you called me was twice was because I reached out to you on Tony Gibson.
That's not accurate. I'm sorry. I reached out to you a month...
Well, I mean, I, I don't...
To inquire.
I don't recall this, but...
That's convenient.
I mean, the people, people that know who they are, I'm not gonna mention any names, they're in this room and they know who they are. They've been the utmost great people to me. But this isn't, this isn't about my wife or anything like that. I mean, I'm not gonna make that about that. I'm just wanting to know about, like, why can't we just wait? Why can't we just wait, Tom, and see what we're gonna do upon this raise, and see where it all settles out? It's not like you're dealing with a free agent on the NFL market. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, approval of the minutes of regular meeting of March twentieth, twenty twenty-five?
Second.
Our promotion's been made in second. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Approval of the tenants' records of committee meetings and work sessions, work session of April fourteenth, twenty twenty-five?
Motion.
Second.
Our promotion's been made in second. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. I guess the broadcast, we're just streaming?
Yeah, W M S.
W M S, okay. Thank you. Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. DeAndrea. The Laurin School District is looking for substitutes in all areas of the district. We need day-to-day professional substitutes in all areas of certification, as well as emergency certified substitutes. In addition, we need support staff substitutes in areas of cafeteria, custodial, secretary, air professional age, aides, health room aides, that's RN or LPN, and secretary, act two thirty-five certified also. For more information, please visit our website or call the office. Next announcement. Uh, right now, it just so happens that our ROTC program is having their award ceremony at the same time that we're having a meeting. And I received this letter from a parent, and I wanna make sure that we recognize, uh, the individual that the letter is geared to. Um, this is a letter appreciation, appreciation for Master Sergeant Daniel Servone from one of our parents and her daughter Ashley, just graduated from the Hill Impact Program conducted by the Pennsylvania State Police. Master Sergeant Servone wrote, um, this, Ashley, a letter of recommendation to aid in getting into the program. He also took his time this evening, or that evening, to come and present his diploma to her at the program. The program was held in Somerset Training Center outside of Greensburg. I would like to congratulate Mr. Servone above and beyond his duty. Thank you. My next announcement is, on May tenth, two thousand twenty-five, the Laurin Highlands Middle School attended the fourth annual Range Resources STEM Challenge in Cannonsburg, PA. This year's challenge was to design a scaled model structure out of balsa wood to cover and protect a natural gas wellhead from any possible impact. Different sized weights were dropped from different heights to test the strength and designs. This year's competition included nineteen teams from eleven, eleven different schools across southwestern Pennsylvania. Under the supervision of STEM, of middle school STEM teachers, Zach Hickson and technology education teacher, Mr. Sean Valente, the Laurin Highlands Middle School maintained a reputation by securing two awards, most creative and first place overall. Laurin Highlands entered the competition with sixth and eighth grade team. The sixth grade team consisted of Arden Braun, Weston Peg, Charlie Skornowski, Bella Spinelli, and Logan Valente. The eighth grade team consisted of Damon Revac, Will Skoronsky, Arham, Sabir, and Andrew Irwin. Congratulations to those involved in this great opportunity, and thank you Range Resources and IU One with amazing hospitality. Congratulations to those teachers and those students on the job well done. And lastly, uh, eighth grade student, Mr. Brad, Bradley, um, Sickman, placed second in the regional level of the National Civics League. He will move on to compete at the state competition held on June thirteenth at State College. And that's from his guidance counselor, Ms. Nicole Boda. Congratulations to Bradley. Job well done. That concludes my report, Mr. DeAndrea.
Thank you, Dr. Wallace. We have a motion to go in the executive session for contractual personnel matters.
Motion.
Our promotion's been made in second. Do you go in the executive session? Any questions on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. We're in executive session at six nineteen.
We'll go across the hall to the science room.
I think this was me. I see my business. You know what? He can do that. Eric, what do you think? What about you? Sixteen. Eric, what do you think? Eric, what do you think?
That's going to be good. I asked for that.
They kicked you out too?
No, I just didn't have anything to say.
Yeah, good year.
I'm pretty sure you're here. What's your comment on it?
Oh, no.
Hey, hey, yeah, you do not want. I, I, I gave my, like, my friend, I like every option. But I got, I got a lot of children. Ten times. I like it. Yeah. How do you feel about it? Do you? Do you? Yes. About that. I said, oh, I mean, that's great. She has six habits, she was eight months pregnant. That's four years. Two forty. That is. Hey, I was wondering if you were, if you were. I've been to it there for a while, but then I.
I should better go.
There's, there's.
Oh, his own. Okay.
Hold on a second.
We need a motion to come back, don't we? I thought so. Do we have a motion to come back from executive session? Proper motion's been made and seconded. Any questions on a motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, we're back in session. Yes, you'd like to speak? Okay, please go over to the mic. State your name, and I assume you live in the district.
My name is Brandy Williams, I have two children that attend Marshall Elementary. I just have a few quick questions, kind of piggybacking off of what the gentleman spoke about earlier in regards to the addendum that was added in at the last minute. I was just kind of wondering, like he said, why we're doing it now, but we already covered that part. But Mr. Frank Hauser here said that it would be five years, correct?
Total.
Total?
After, can't be any more than five at an exist, at the existing time.
Okay, so wouldn't this put him? Wouldn't this put him over five years?
No, extension's three, so it would, it would be three additional, which is two left now.
Okay, so, but.
It's a total of five.
Should've, from the mathematics that we were kind of working on, myself and a few other people, it would've been five years and some odd months.
No, the, the extension doesn't go into effect till July one.
Okay.
That's what the vote would be.
Okay, and then also, like he said, where's the money coming from to extend this?
Well, it's part of the budget.
Do we have that budget?
Budget, the new budget will be adopted in June, and there's a new budget every year.
Right.
But, that's a decision, that's a discretion of the board to determine the value of the contract and the numbers associated with the contract, and I don't do the numbers.
Right.
But that's something that the board has looked at, I'm sure.
But I, I'm just wondering how we can vote on something when we don't have the budget quite yet.
We vote on contracts all the time.
Well, his, his numbers are pretty solid though for the next two years, that wouldn't change the budget. The numbers that are there for the next two years won't change.
For the next two years, correct, but we're, we're talking about for the extension itself.
Most all superintendent's contracts are at least three years, they have to be at least three years, and most superintendent contracts do go between three and five years.
Okay, and then I'm sure there's going to be a pay increase also?
There's always increases in every contract.
And at what percent?
Well, that's part of what was being discussed, and I'm sure that the board members that are involved will explain that extension. Well, it's, and the terms of the contract will be public.
Okay, but I feel like that should all be public knowledge prior to.
Well, the board has reviewed it, and they know what the numbers are, and if it's their discretion to state those numbers, they can, sure.
I have a problem with that, seeing as it's not been approved yet.
But what's being voted on would be the numbers that.
Well, I don't have a problem with that after the vote, no.
Well, no.
As.
As you're voting, the, the knowledge of what's being voted on is fine to be made public.
I'm good with that.
So, we won't know until after everything's said and done?
No, we can, we can state that when we.
Okay.
When it gets that time of the agenda, I'm sure that'll be part of the discussion.
So, if we all know now, why can't it just be said now?
Because we're following the agenda of the meeting, when we get to that part of the agenda, that will come up. We're not discussing athletics at the beginning of the meeting.
I've got no problems, you know what, I, I have no problem speaking on it.
I just don't know why it's such a secret.
Sure, I, I don't think it is a secret. I'll, I'll tell you, it, to me, to me, it makes financial sense, and I'll tell you why. So, the current contract is, on the, the year that it ends, if it was only extended by one year, it would be, it would cost the district an additional eleven thousand dollars. So, when you get to the end of a contract, if the, say, say a board comes in and they can't make a decision, they just can't, they can't come to a decision together.
Right.
Okay, so, let's just say you have four yeses, four nos, and a pass. That contract automatically gets extended by one year.
Right.
At the end of the contract, if you, with this extension that was proposed to us by Dr. Wallace, in year three, so if it just got extended by one year, it would cost the board, or cost the school district, the same amount as if we extended it to five. So, financially, it makes sense, because if, if a board can't come to a decision, and it gets extended just by one year.
Right.
You're going to pay what you would pay over the course of five years.
Right.
The sal, the salary ones. Because it changes from a, a percentage increase that's there now, in per diem days, to a, a contract that's a lump sum, so it's just a straight dollar amount, it's not percentages, they get compounded year over year with, with days, to something that's much different, in a, a lump sum, but just a guaranteed, that this is going to be the dollar amount, and then those days come down in value, and they go into a different, different account that we're not paying Peasars on. Because for everything that you pay Peasars on, you pay Peasars in social security, you're paying forty-two percent. So, those days will come off, and then we're not paying forty-two percent anymore. So, in my opinion, everybody has an opinion.
Right.
It makes financial sense.
To just extend him for the full three years?
Yes.
Understandable, I get that, but at that amount that you specified? What percentage is that, just so I'm aware?
It would be under three percent, it would be, so, o, over the course of those three years, it would be roughly two point four percent.
Okay, second part.
Which is, which is below the national average.
Oh, right, I've already done my homework.
Of a merit increase.
Yeah, I think Pennsylvania's right around like three, well, last year it was twelve percent for superintendents across the state, but typically it's three to four.
Right.
Which is.
And this is under three.
Right, right, which, understandable, I get where you're coming from. Second part is, I just, I just don't understand why it was so hush-hush, why it wasn't listed until yesterday was added in at the last second. And I think it was done so like parents weren't here, because there were so many parents that didn't even know about it and couldn't come because they had other obligations.
That's why we have a work session, we discuss things, and there are things added almost every meeting, because there are things we discuss that we don't know if we were going to move forward or not. The agenda's printed before, and then we get the addendum after, after we decide what's, what's going to be added, and it's always placed on the addendum, and almost every meeting we have an addendum.
This is a huge addendum though, this is, this is something bigger than some, something small.
To put it in perspective, I, I've been, this is my eighth year on the board, and I came to a meeting some years ago, but we extended a bus contract at three and a half percent year over year for three years. It was a multimillion dollar contract.
And that was going to be my next question, would that increase be per year?
Yeah, 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 it's a year.
Would it increase per year, or would it stay at that rate?
No, it stays at that rate.
Okay.
It's a flat rate for.
Second part, I have heard through the grapevine that there is some land behind Marshall Elementary that is going to be sold.
That's not decided yet, the board voted two meetings ago to have the property appraised. That is in the process right now, once that's done, that appraisal will be brought to the board, and it will be their decision at that point whether to go through the process of a bidding process with a minimum based on that, not sell it at all, or go through the court process that's needed to sell that.
And so.
That's very, the very infancy stages of that process.
And do you have a buyer in mind?
No, well, that can't happen, because it has to be all public. There was someone who made inquiry, absolutely, that's, that's public knowledge, everyone knows that, but that can't be.
I wasn't aware.
Well, I mean, I don't, I don't know, who knows, or, I mean, obviously, a lot of people know, but there was.
It wasn't hidden.
It wasn't hidden, it was, you know, I can tell you who it was, but they, he inquired about it, which I then said, well, this is the process that we have to go through, it has to be open, it has to follow the rules of the school code, and the first part of that is to have it appraised so that the school board knows what to do with it, and we don't have that yet, that's in the process.
But no one person can say, hey, I want this, I'll get it appraised, and I'm going to buy it, that's not how the process works.
It would be an open process available to anyone who wants to participate.
If we choose to move forward.
And if the board chooses to move forward.
Yeah, I just feel like if you're going to, because there was plenty of parents at that school who had no idea that that was even an idea, I feel like it should be made public knowledge.
We, I spoke about it extensively.
I, I spoke about it in open board meetings, in work sessions.
Okay, but not every parent can come to board meetings, so I think it should be listed on the school board page somewhere, on the Facebook page somewhere.
Well, it will be when the.
It'd be reflected in the minutes.
Decided.
The, the vote to actually bring it up, to actually have it appraised, was in the agenda prior, it was posted on our.
But before anything actually happens, it would have to be advertised in complete, open process. I'll make sure that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, academic foundation report, Mr. Kalcik, I know you said you didn't have anything.
Yes, correct, yes.
Okay, thank you. Comprehensive Plan Board Policy and Public Relations Committee, Mr. Danano.
Thank you, Mr. DeAndrea. Under Board Policy Committee Report, BP one, we have revisions to policies under Exhibit A due to recent review, PSBA recommendations, following policies have revisions and updates that are needed at this time. Once approved, they will be retained in policy manual marked with an updated 2025 revision date. As following, one oh four, discrimination harassment affecting staff, two eighteen point one, volume three, students' discipline, two eighteen point one, volume three, weapons students, two thirty four, pregnant, parenting, and married students, two forty six, school wellness, eight oh three, school calendar, eight oh six, child abuse, nine oh nine, municipal government regulations.
Second. Proper motion's been made and seconded, any questions on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Danano. Curriculum Committee, Mrs. Conway.
Thank you, Mr. DeAndrea. C one is informational, congratulations to the high school academic quiz team who earned a spot in the state competition in Harrisburg, May first through the second, twenty twenty five, for the second consecutive year. Members of the quiz team are Casey Kurwatsky, Drew Nicolo, Jackson Wade, Ben Prack, Toby Downs, Zoe Kaufman, Ethan Domon, and Elijah McCourt. In addition, they will tour the Flight Ninety-three Memorial in Shanksville, and also tour Gettysburg. Good luck at states. C, C two, I'd like to put in the form of a motion to approve the high school academic quiz team to attend the state tournament, May first through the second, twenty twenty five, in Harrisburg, PA, with chaperones Miss Julie Venick and Mr. Paul Patron. The total cost is approximately four thousand five hundred dollars. The district has received approximately two thousand five hundred dollars in donations, and would like to thank the LH Academic Foundation, Bright Strip, M and R Transportation, and Paul Scurll's Agency.
I'll second it. Proper motion's been made and seconded, any questions on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
C three is informational, congratulations to the high school math competition team for being first place throughout the school year in their section of the Western Pennsylvania Mathematics League. C four is informational, LH online kindergarten registration for the twenty twenty five, twenty six school year is open. Parents can register on our website or scan the QR code on the flyers and signs throughout our community. C five is informational, National Teacher Day is Tuesday, May sixth, twenty twenty five, and National Teacher Appreciation Week is May fifth through the ninth, twenty twenty five. Laurel Highlands would like to acknowledge all of our teachers, as well as all of our staff, for helping to prepare our students for their future, thank you. C six, I'd like to put in the form of a motion to approve twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six textbook and program materials, all costs will be paid for by the Ready to Learn Grant on an Exhibit B.
I'll second it. Proper motion's been made and seconded, any questions on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
C seven is informational, a big thank you to the Huntington National Bank, as they are hosting an evening event on April twenty eighth, twenty twenty five, called Ignite the Classroom. Educators from the Laurel Highlands Middle School are one of five districts to receive a special invitation to participate. The keynote speaker for the event will be Ron Clark, founder of the acclaimed Ron Clark Academy, and he will be celebrating educators. Additionally, at the event, the Huntington Bank will select a number of educators to receive a full scholarship to attend the Ron Clark Academy in twenty twenty five. C eight is informational, the annual Title One survey will be posted on our website starting April sixteenth, and will remain open until April thirtieth for parents to provide their input into the Title One program. That concludes my report, Mr. DeAndrea.
Thank you, Mrs. Conway. Voting and grounds committee, Mr. Meadows.
Thank you, Mr. DeAndrea. I'd like to thank Mr. Galeno for his report, and as always, I would like to thank Mr. Galeno and his staff for their continued hard work. That concludes my report, Mr. DeAndrea.
Thank you, Mr. Meadows. Finance, Budget, and Taxation Committee, Mr. Raymond.
Make a motion to approve the bank reconciliation and board summary found in Exhibit C.
Second. Proper motion's been made and seconded, any questions on the motion? Roll call, Kim.
Mr. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Meadows?
Yes.
Mr. Lammon?
Yes.
Mr. Kalcik?
Yes.
Mr. Elias?
Yes.
Mr. Danano?
Yes.
Mrs. Beal?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. DeAndrea?
Yes. Motion carries.
Make a motion to approve the payment of bills in Exhibit D.
Sorry?
Proper motion's been made and seconded, any questions on the motion? Roll call, Kim.
Mr. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Meadows?
Yes.
Mr. Kalcik?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Danano?
Yes.
Mrs. Beal? Mr. Elias?
Yes.
Mr. Lammon?
Yes.
Mr. DeAndrea?
Yes. Motion carries.
Make a motion to approve the payment of GOB bills in Exhibit D.
Second. Proper motion's been made and seconded, any questions on the motion? Roll call, Kim.
Mr. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Meadows?
Yes.
Mr. Elias?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Danano?
Yes.
Mr. Lammon?
Yes.
Mr. Kalcik?
Yes.
Mrs. Beal?
Yeah.
Mr. DeAndrea?
Yes.
Nine yeses.
Motion carries.
Investment report, Exhibit F, is informational, make a motion to approve the federal report, Exhibit G.
Second. Proper motion's been made and seconded, any questions on the motion? Roll call, Kim.
Mr. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Meadows?
Yes.
Mrs. Beal?
Yeah.
Mr. Danano?
Yes.
Mr. Lammon?
Yes.
Mr. Elias?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Kalcik?
Yes.
Mr. DeAndrea?
Yes.
Nine yeses.
Motion carries.
Make a motion to approve the student activity funds and athletic funds in Exhibit H.
Second. Proper motion's been made and seconded, any questions on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Make a motion for permission to secure quotes for insurances for the twenty five, twenty six school years follows general liability, workers' compensation, and errors and omissions insurance. We will obtain these quotes through our current broker record, quotes are obtained by them through PSBA and insurance trust.
Second. Proper motion's been made and seconded, any questions on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
That's all I have, Mr. DeAndrea.
Thank you, Mr. Raymond. Health, Nutrition, and Foods Committee. Thank you, Mr. Raymond. Health, Nutrition, and Foods Committee, Mrs. Conway.
Thank you, Mr. DeAndrea. HNF1, I'd like to put in the form of a motion, the Cafeteria Report found in Exhibit I.
Second. Proper motion's been made and seconded. Any questions on the motion? Roll call, Kim.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Meadows?
Yes.
Mr. Danano?
Yes.
Mrs. Beal? Mr. Kalcik?
Yes.
Mr. Elias?
Yes.
Mr. Lammon?
Yes.
Mr. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Danano?
Yes.
Or, I'm sorry, Mr. DeAndrea.
Yes.
Nine ayes.
Ten oh. Motion carries. Sorry.
That concludes my report, Mr. DeAndrea.
Thank you, Mrs. Conway. Security, Safety, and Transportation Committee, Mrs. Beal.
Approve additional drivers for M&amp;R Transportation.
Second. Proper motion's been made and seconded. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mrs. Beal. Human Resources Committee, Mrs. Conway.
Thank you, Mr. DeAndrea. P1, I'd like to put in the form of a motion to approve additional substitute teachers found in Exhibit K.
Second. Proper motion's been made and seconded. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
P2, for resignations, I'd like to move to P6 to put in the form of a motion to accept the resignation of Ms. Tamila Jacobs, Health Room 8 at Hatfield and Hutchinson, effective April 4th, 2025.
Second. Proper motion's been made and seconded. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
I'd like to thank Ms. Jacobs for her time here at Laurel Highlands. We appreciate her efforts and her dedication to our children. Thank you.
P3, there are no conference requests at this time. P4, I'd like to put in the form of a motion to approve additional substitute employees for support personnel found in Exhibit K.
Second. Proper motion's been made and seconded. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
P5, I'd like to put in the form of a motion to approve paraprofessional update found in Exhibit L.
Second. Proper motion's been made and seconded. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
That concludes my report, Mr. DeAndrea.
Thank you, Mrs. Conway. Athletic and Extracurricular Activities Committee, Mr. Lammon.
Thank you, Mr. DeAndrea. Under A&amp;E 1A, approved bids for fall sports, that's under Exhibit N. M. And the total bid for the high schools, thirty-five thousand, six hundred and one dollars and seventeen cents. The total for the middle schools, four thousand, seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars and seventy-nine cents. The total for fall sports here at Laurel Highlands is forty thousand, six hundred and forty-five dollars and thirty-one cents. I'd like to put that in form of a motion.
Second. Proper motion's been made and seconded. Any questions on the motion? Roll call, Kim.
Mr. Lammon?
Yes.
Mr. Meadows?
Yes.
Mr. Raymond?
Yes.
Mrs. Beal?
Yeah.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Kalcik?
Yes.
Mr. Elias?
Yes.
Mr. Danano?
Yes.
Mr. DeAndrea?
Yes.
Nine ayes.
Motion carries.
Under A&amp;E 2A, approved fall coaches for the 2025-26 school year, that's in Exhibit N, and I'm gonna read the names. And Dr. Wallace, all of their clearances are incorrect.
Correct.
Absolutely. First assistant varsity football coach, Pat Lyon. Fourth assistant varsity football coaches, Zach Hickson, Justin Haynes, Amani Marsh, and Chris Van Meter. Head ninth grade football coach, Cedric Lloyd. Assistant ninth grade football coach, Jerry Peg. Head seventh and eighth grade football coach, Bart Donnelly. Two assistants seventh and eighth grade football coaches, Jase Donley and Bill Barton. No one applied for the varsity sock, boy soccer coach, head all the way down, assistant varsity girl soccer coach, Carl Walker. Head seventh and eighth grade girl soccer coach, John Truski. Assistant seventh and eighth grade girl soccer coach, Abby Thomas. Assistant varsity boys, girls cross-country coach, Kenny Rydel. Head seventh and eighth grade boys and girls cross-country coach, Jope Colombo and Martin Gaddy. Assistant seventh and eighth grade boys and girls cross-country coach, Three, Abby Thompson, Abby Thomas, Courtney Bradcliffe. On the backside, head seventh and eighth grade boys, girls swimming coach, William McComby. Assistant seventh and eighth grade boys and girls swimming coach, Jennifer Fryder. Head seventh and eighth grade softball coach, Emma Bliss. Assistant varsity cheer coach, Alyssa Gallagher. Head ninth grade cheer coach, Lucy Sees. Head seventh and eighth grade cheer coach, Kaylee Eisler. Volunteer coaches, Cameron Simpson, for the cheerleaders, cross-country, Paul Livingston. Note, middle school girls basketball has been moved to spring sports, therefore it's not posted. Middle school softball has been made a fall sport and is part of this posting. Any questions, please contact Mr. Mark John, the athletic director, or Mr. Mike Smith, assistant athletic director. I'd like to put that in the form of a motion at this time.
Second. Proper motion's been made and seconded. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. DeAndrea, that concludes my report. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Lammon. Legal advisor.
Agreements were discussed at the work session with the Council of Record. From my perspective, we did discuss already the issue in regard to the appraisal, which has not been completed yet, which I will get to the board as soon as possible. No other additional report.
Okay, thank.
Three, I can read that.
Okay.
Approve permission for Kim Peg to begin the process to fulfill any and all requirements of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania to renew our notary commission, reappointment for the district.
Second. Oh, you said. Proper made, motion. Proper motion's been made and seconded. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Advisor, if you have addressed your State Ethics Commission forum to Kim, please do that as soon as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Frank Housen. I'm gonna move to the addendum. We're gonna move to the addendum. Approved extension to the superintendent contract as discussed, July 1st, 2027 through July 30th, 2030. And we're gonna, the raise will be six thousand dollars for each of the three years. And there's an opportunity for Dr. Wallace, as there is now, to buy sick days back. No more than fifteen the first year, no more than the second, fifteen the second year, and no more than thirty the third year, at a two hundred dollar rate. And those will not be included in the contract as it is right now. And, so we don't have to pay, as Mr. Raymond said, we don't have to pay the Peersers. What's that?
Whatever the balance is, will be subject to that.
Yes, the remainder will be at a hundred dollars a day. And this will go into deferred compensation fund without us paying the Peersers or the social security. We're just making, the motion was just made. It's gonna be just made. Do we have a motion to, or that? I can't make the motion.
I'll make that motion.
Do we have, motion's been made and seconded. Any questions on the motion? Roll call, Kim.
Mr. Meadows?
Yes.
Mr. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Kalcik?
Yes.
Mr. Lammon?
Yes.
Mr. Danano?
No.
Mr. Elias?
No.
Mrs. Conway?
No.
Mrs. Beal?
Yeah.
Mr. DeAndrea?
Yes.
Six ayes and three nays.
Motion carries.
I'd like to thank the board for their confidence in me to move forward as leadership, with leadership in the district. I will, as I have done in the past, continue to honor that position and give you a hundred and ten percent every day. Thank you.
Back to general matters. Career and Technical Institute report. Do you have anything?
I don't have anything. There's a, the healthcare building is very near to be open, probably within the next month. That process is going to be brought up at the next meeting, as far as where it stands. We are negotiating with the support personnel right now for their new contract, which comes into effect in August. We're at three meetings, one meeting is scheduled before the end of the month to discuss that contract. And I believe that's the extent of the information that I need to present to the home district.
All the cooking classes they had are kind of.
Filled up.
They're filled up and they end for Easter.
Yes.
I estimate for Easter, so. Okay. Intermediate Unit report. Do we have anything?
We have several trainings for safety and security coming up, starting in May and continuing through August, dealing with helping the districts with their emergency operation plans, behaviors of concern, threat assessment teams trainings, things like that going on at the intermediate unit. More information will be coming soon to the districts. I'll have the registration links, et cetera. And all those trainings are free of charge, of course.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Meadows. Other business. Is there any other public comment? Would anybody like to speak? Yes, sir. Just give us your name, go over to the podium over here, or whatever looks like a podium.
My name's Jeff Hutchinson. I just, I just had a question about this, the property at Marshall. So, who is it that knows what property you guys are thinking about selling? Is it just, I mean, do you have a, if I show you the map, can I, can you show me?
It's approximately two plus acres to the rear of the building.
Is it, is it the wooded area right here?
Yeah. Yes.
So is it, so that, that takes care of the whole wooded area, basically?
Pretty much, yes.
Okay. So that's, that's what I was, so this is, this is the thing that a lot of people don't know. This is kind of what happened, and Mrs. Beal voted a lot of people opposed to me, and I appreciate that.
Your line.
Well, sorry. Well, anyway, I, I just would like, anybody that, that is looking to actually have an idea of what, what you guys are thinking about selling. Because this is, I mean, it's, this is a piece of property that borders the playground. There's a right-of-way that goes right beside the parking lot, so you're opening that up to possible, it doesn't even matter who buys it or what, what the intent of that property is. Once you sell it, you can't control it. So this is, and this is what I would like the people to see, that whenever you zoom in on this, this is a, this is a picture of the, of the school right here. This is where the property is, this wooden line there. And the playground's right there. There's a, there's a right-of-way that if somebody does, if they, if they actually do buy that, there's a right-of-way that goes right beside the parking lot right there. So.
Right-of-way doesn't necessarily go with the front, because that would have to be a decision that would be made by the board.
Well, I don't know. It goes to property behind it, so it'll border that. So I, as far as I'm, as far as I'm aware, I think that right-of-way would go there. So, you're gonna have traffic that you're gonna pick up that's gonna go right past the, the school parking lot.
All the issues that would be discussed before a decision's made.
Two acres of ground. You're gonna take all the, you're gonna take, take away all the privacy of the back of the school for two acres of ground. It doesn't make any sense. You have trees, you know, you have nature there. Like, that's, that's like very, very important to kids. And it's something that, that you guys, I hope, will be aware of, and maybe some of the parents can maybe reach out and tell you guys how they feel, if they, if they're aware of it. Because nobody knows about this stuff.
That's why we're discussing.
And once it's, and once it's gone, it's gone. And you can't control it. And like I say, it doesn't matter who's gonna buy it, or who may buy it. Five years from now, it might be different owners, it might be, you don't, you can't control that. And you're gonna have people right up against, now, see, this is the other thing. So when I went to school, we went to Kennedy Elementary School. You guys closed that. And Mrs. Beal voted not to close it, and I respect that. But anyway, so then what'd they do? They added on to Marshall. So now, you're, this is the same kind of thing. You're, you're looking and saying, well, we're gonna sell two acres of land. What's it gonna give you? A pin drop and a sixty-five million dollar budget? I mean, for two acres of land, it's, it's like something you can never get back. As time goes on, I feel like that's a terrible, terrible idea, and I think a lot of parents feel that way. So I hope you guys really, really think that out before you go and just basically, you know, it doesn't matter what you get out of it. You're not gonna get enough out of it, you can never buy it back. So that's, I just wanted to let you know how I feel, and I think a lot of parents feel that way too. So I, I hope you guys can take that into account, because everybody's watching. And everybody, that, you know, that, if you're, if you're really concerned about your kids, I think that having a buffer zone for the, for the kids on the playground, not having the right-of-way, right, you know, somebody, you can't control who goes, if there's one house goes in there, you can't control who's driving back and forth on there. It doesn't, it doesn't make any sense at all to me. I don't know why you'd do that. So, that's, that's my point of view. So I, I just wanted to, just to let you know, I'm a taxpayer, and that's how I feel. So, I appreciate the moment to speak.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, do we have a motion for adjournment? Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. And Marshall, once it comes in, I don't know if there will be five votes for that. I'm not in favor. We're gonna sell some kids, you know, really. Did you, you do have my address, so I didn't have, okay, Brian Land.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Every time I see him, I'm like, I forget.